Let's get it. Let's go. I never know where to go here, though, bro. I never know where to go. Where is my chat? Hello, guys. Here, here, there we go. Good morning, guys. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Testing one, two. Can everyone hear me? Testing one, two. Can everybody hear me, man? Welcome in, guys. Happy Saturday morning, man. Saturday morning, free Saturday morning sessions. Welcome in. Welcome in. Welcome back to the channel. If you guys are just tuning in, man, appreciate you guys being here. Welcome. Welcome, welcome, guys. Welcome. Good morning, everybody. What's up, guys? How are you, man? How's your week? How's everyone's week, man? How have we performed? How have we performed? What's up, guys? What's going on, Kevin? GD, what's up, man? How are you? Appreciate it. Thank you so much for being in the live stream today, guys. Welcome in. Welcome in. I'm just gonna put a blast out real quick on, um, on Discord, let everyone know that we're, we're live. You're live now on YouTube. All right. Let's go. Let's go. Let's go. Morning study session. Cool. Cool, cool. What's up, guys? Welcome on in. Welcome on into the stream Saturday morning sessions. Oh, man. I guess I'm gonna let the stream fill up a little bit here. Maybe get to like a hundred people. I don't know how many people we have in here right now, but we should definitely be in the hundreds on these live streams. Every time I've gone live, we've been over that number, so. We'll just let it, we'll, we'll kind of let it chill out a little bit and we'll, we'll talk and we will, uh, we'll do a little bit of Q and A session. See how everyone's doing. I want your job. Took me, it took me nine, nine painful years, bro. Almost 10 years coming up on, so. Trading is, uh, trading is a great job, but you really, you can't give up on it. Chat, I went to Starbucks today, so we've got a little something, a little something different. I got a cold brew. A salted caramel cream cold, cold brew. I'm trying different things at Starbucks. Because I don't even know. Uh, I've been a big Dunkin' fan my whole, my whole career, but. I just woke up and went to Starbucks face, basically. I woke up, got me my breakfast, my breakfast burrito, and, uh, yeah, here we are. No, you're not late. We just started like two minutes ago. We're just waiting for the stream to fill up a little bit. We're waiting for the stream to fill up a little bit. Does your job get boring at some point? No, man. I mean, I'm, listen, trading is notoriously a boring sport. Um, people that tell you otherwise are liars. Um, you gotta be really disciplined. You gotta be really patient. You gotta be able to just, you know, sit at a chart for hours on end and, and not execute a trade, so. It, all the flash and stuff that you see on the internet is all baloney. Real trading is what we do four to five days a week in the premium group. It's, um, that's real trading, man. That's real trading. PJ, would you mind going over Wednesday's 10 a.m. short? Identify the model myself. I have all the models on the chart here today, all the ones I took this week. So we're gonna go over like pretty much all that stuff. I'm just waiting for the stream to hit like 100, then we can kind of get into like technicals and stuff. How smooth is first payout with Apex? Not smooth. Not smooth, bro. Uh, as long as you didn't break any rules and stuff, but they might ask you for additional information. They may ask you for your strategy. They may ask you for screenshots. They may ask you for video proof. Apex is very stingy with that. Cause so many people try gaming the system with Apex. So you have to be prepared for follow-up questions. Um, so I always recommend, like, if you're trading Apex, you should be screenshotting your trades. You should probably be using a recording software to record your trades, so they know you're not a scammer. Um, I would just be, I would be really careful with it. Um, they pay out, but you need to prove that you're not like, you're not gaming the system. When did you start being profitable? Did it take you nine years? No, no, it took me four, about four and a half years when I hit profitability, really break even, and then since then, which is like another four and a half years, five years of full-time trading profitability. Hmm. All right, we're almost at 100. We're almost at 100. Guys, could we get 95 concurrent viewers in here? Could we get some likes? I mean, this is the first time we're really doing YouTube live. Um, we're normally live on TikTok and we get way more people than this, so. I really want to start building up the YouTube audience because TikTok live streaming is just falling off, straight falling off an edge. And I'd rather be going live on YouTube because you guys can see the full screen and we can talk and it's a lot easier, honestly. So, all right. Have you watched the 2024 ICT mentorship? I have not watched, and this, you guys are to think I'm crazy. I have not watched a single mentorship video after the 2022 mentorship in ICT. I have not watched a single one. When I found the 2022 and basically, in, basically took the 2022 and molded into what I was already doing, I didn't need anything else. You don't need every model ICT dropping. You only need one model, really. I trade like four models at this point, but one model will literally set you free, so. Don't overcomplicate it and 2022 and mentorship is the best mentorship to watch. I recommend watching that over and over and over again. Um, but anything other than that, really, in my opinion, is noise. And you could talk to a lot of the best traders in the space and they're all gonna tell you the same thing. Just watch the 2022 and you're good. What do you think about TGR and the way he trades? Do you trade similar? I honestly don't really know how TGR trades, um, so I couldn't really give you an answer on that. We began the study session at 11? No, we just started, man, at 10:46. Like a couple minutes ago. All right, we got 100 people in here. All right, so. Listen, I, I like doing these study sessions where it's pretty much like, it's pretty much like user-guided. So you guys really, we can do two things, right? I'll go through setups from the week. And we could talk about them. Next, we can bring on people onto the Discord, so I can hear your voice. And you can give me, you can answer, you can ask questions, or you can show me your setups if you want to do that, too. I like the Q and A model. I, I really like getting involved in seeing what you guys are doing wrong and right, so. We'll start with some setups from this week. And then you guys can bring in, we can get you guys onto the Discord channel. I'll bring you into an audio call and we can do, um, we could do some Q and A that way. I like actually listening to you guys like talk and speak and stuff like that, make corrections to what you're doing, so. Uh, let's go all the way back. So if you guys are following along with me in the trade review section on my Discord, if we go all the way back to 7-7, right, that's the first trade we took this week. That was a Monday trade. I made $5,100 in profit in that, on that trade in literally seconds on inverted for value gap model. So we're gonna go back to, um, one second, we're gonna go back to that trade. And we're gonna just start from the week moving forward. I mean, from Monday, moving, moving to the end of the week, so. Let's get into this. Let's get into the short setup that we took here on Monday morning, so. A lot of you guys know that I don't really like trading Mondays, um, with no news. So if we go back to the week here, this is literally a very dead week. Okay, so we have no news Monday, no news Tuesday. And then two news events and then Friday, right? This week was very, very slow. I was on the charts. Okay, so here's what happened. I saw where the market was sitting and I saw what it was doing and I said audible, we're going live because I think we're gonna get a freebie. So I audibled and I went live. I normally don't, but I looked at the market and I said, okay, we just swept Asia high. We put in it, we're, we're putting in like a 15-minute breaker. This is all pre-market, guys. Watch this right here. This is all pre-market. Okay, so I'm seeing this, right? I see the Asia high get swept. Okay. Asia high gets swept, high, low, higher, high, lower, low. So we put in a clean 15-minute breaker. It's actually a 15-minute unicorn. Okay, why is it a 15-minute unicorn, guys? Why is this a 15-minute unicorn? Yes, fair value gap. So, we put in a 15-minute unicorn. Okay. And this is what it looks like right here, right? I'm coming into the session and I'm thinking to myself, all right, this looks really, really clean. I'm gonna then hop on live because I think we're gonna get a freebie towards the London low. And that's exactly what happened. So. If you guys are not familiar with the breaker model, you really should familiarize yourself because it looks exactly the same. Every single time you see it, it's exactly the same. And if it doesn't look exactly the same, then it's, you're looking at it, you're, you're drawing it wrong. Does everyone understand how these breakers, uh, work? Does everyone understand how to draw the breaker in real time?
I wish there was no stream latency.
Okay, so here's how you draw the breaker, guys. Okay. Let me just, I'll keep that there. So in a breaker formation, um, the thing that you're gonna look for is a high. It's four components, guys. Very simple. It's a pattern recognition. Now, let me explain something about the, when these breakers are the highest probability breakers. When the market sweeps a key liquidity point, okay, when the market sweet, sweeps a key liquidity point and forms this rotation out of a key liquidity point. Can you guys see the Asia high here is a kind of hard? Let me make it, let me make it red. Here's the Asia high right here in red. Okay, we sweep the Asia high, which is a key liquidity point from the overnight session. And then we put in a four, it's four key things that have to happen in this pattern. It's going to be a high, a low, a higher high and a new lower low below this low. This creates your change in the state of delivery, which also confirms the breaker. How do we draw the breaker? Okay, it's the consecutive down closed candles before the leg up that took the liquidity. That's how you draw the breaker out. High, low, higher, high, lower, low. Down closed candles before the leg up that took liquidity. That is your breaker block. Okay, that's how you form the breaker block and that's how you mark it out in real time. High, low, higher, high, lower, low. Literally just become robotic and looking for that. It's all you're looking for. Now, it becomes a very high probability breaker. Okay, when it sweeps, when it sweeps. Wait, oh, well, key liquidity point, high probability. We're just gonna put that there. When it sweeps a key liquidity point, it's a high probability breaker. Okay. Are we understanding this? Are we confused? No, but not that single candle is the breaker? What? What do you mean the same? No, guys, the, the consecutive down closed. That's it. Consecutive down closed candles. If it's, if it's consecutive, you draw the entire consecutive down close. If there was no, if there was, let's say, two bearish, one bullish and another bearish, it would be these two. But since it's consecutive, you draw it from the bodies of those candles, okay? Bodies to body. Okay. This is now sweeping Asia high, so we get a very high probability breaker. Okay, now, what makes this high probability as well? We have a unicorn model here. When there's a fair value gap, excuse me, when there's a fair value gap paired inside of a breaker, that becomes a unicorn and it's, it's a unicorn because it's a rarer model. You don't see it every single day. It's a rare model, so we call a unicorn breaker. Hence the name unicorn. So, what happens here at this point is we are patient and we're now waiting for this market to move back into the breaker. Specifically, the first presented fair value gap on this leg, which is gonna be the strongest fair value gap inside the breaker, which is the unicorn. Okay, market pulls back in, as you can see. Now let's jump down on the one minute because you guys really gotta see this on the one minute. Right? So here we go here. We're not involved in this trade setup just yet. Okay, we're not involved just yet. Let me delete this. Here's what we look for. Sorry, it's right here. Market comes up on the one-minute timeframe and it taps directly into the 15-minute breaker. So here's the thing that a lot of you guys get mixed up on. You're so focused on one timeframe that you forget about the higher timeframes and what they're telling you. And this is why I tell people you need to have this stuff drawn on your chart. Because if you're just focused on this one minute and you don't have the breaker here anymore, and you don't know where the fair value gap is here anymore, you're literally just trading blind. Like, what are you even doing here? So you gotta have this stuff marked out. We're on the one minute, right? But we know what the 15-minute looks like. This is 15-minute. This is all the 15-minute breaker here. We tap into it, right? Big part of the key to the puzzle. We tap into the, uh, the FEG. Now, PJ, how do we get an entry model here? Well, on the one minute, look, there's no entry. On the one minute, there's no entry. Nothing, right? Bring it back. Drop down to the 30-second. Wow, what is this now? Now we have a massive 30-second gap here, okay? 30-second FEG. Now you have an, a potential model. Okay, now you have a potential model. And all you're doing here, chat, is sitting on your hands, waiting for this model to flip. Okay, still no trade. And if you guys are in my premium Discord, you know, no inverse, no trade. Right? This is not an inverse right here. Do not get front-run on this. You're gonna get stopped out. Wait, wait, boom. There's your confirmation. Okay, there's your entry. This is your stop. This is your target. Okay. That's it. It's a very, it's a very quick trade. And literally in seconds, you have full delivery. Okay, so that was trade number one of the week. Very, very fast, very aggressive. And that was how you trade a 30-second inverse, but you have to put the, you have to put all the elements together, right? It's not that we're just honing in on a 30-second because I'm trading a 30-second blind. I'm trading a 15-minute breaker. Okay, understand this part. This is the part that should flip your, in your brain. I'm still trading a 15-minute breaker, but I'm getting a 30-second fine-tuned entry for a model. Okay, so you're on, when you're trading, I get a lot of new people. I'm, I'm just focused on the one minute. I can't get, I can't get off the one minute, the two-minute, the three-minute, the five, and they're not looking at what the 15 and the one hour and the four hour are telling them. So you guys gotta be able to use all timeframes at once. That's why trading is, is difficult because you can't get stuck on one timeframe. You're gonna need to use all these timeframes to find models. Do we have any questions about this one? Do we have any questions about this one? Why no entry on the one minute? Because there is no model on the one minute. You see here on the one minute, my, my boy, there's no inverse here. There's no clean fair value gap left behind on the leg. The 30-second gives you the, gives you the, the print, not the one minute. So you have to search the 30. How did you get an entry if there was no inverse? This is the inverse right here. Do you not see it? This candle closing below this is your inverse. That's your, that's your entry. Right here, there's no inverse. There's still no inverse. This next candle is your inverse. You see? That's your entry. That's your confirmation. That's your entry. That's your confirmation. That's your tongue, your target at London low. And that's your full conviction in the trade setup. Yeah, so I used to not use 30-second timeframes, but then I realized I'm missing out on a lot of free setups on the 30-second. Um, so I, I recommend if you're getting more advanced with this stuff, 30-second is gonna provide honestly really great setups and really tight entries. You need to really fine-tune it like a surgeon, guys. Like, we're going from like one hour 15, 5, 1, 30. Like, we're getting deep into price action here. We're seeing everything on a lower timeframe, which is giving us really, really good feedback. Like, I don't know how to explain it. It's like, it's like a surgeon. Like, you're going into surgery and you're going into somebody's body with a, uh, you know, a tool or a magnifying glass that you can see exactly what's going on. That's why we need to get lower. I don't go lower than the 30. I don't go lower than the 30, but the 30 is gonna give you some really, really good setup. So I, I would recommend getting yourself acquainted with how to drop down from 15, 5, 3, 2, 1, 30 to find better setups. And guys, when you're trading ICT, we're surgeons. We're, we're in and out of the market, right? I'm not looking to trade six, seven, eight hours in one trade. Like, my average trade time is seven, eight minutes. So, this is pure price action. This is pure price action trading and that's why I like to fine-tune the entry. Should I not wait for a retest into the inverted for value gap? This is a good question. And this comes down to two principles, two key principles. What is price action telling me? Okay. And is my model a retest? Okay, I personally do not. I trade both of them, but I read price action first. Because if you can see the way that this is reacting out of the 15-minute unicorn and the way that we are displacing aggressively through this 30-second gap, you can see in the candle closures, this is very, very bearish looking. I'm not looking for a retest here. And you're gonna see later in my next trade review, uh, in one of the, the trade reviews on YouTube that we're gonna do here, you're gonna see we took that as a retest trade. Whereas this one we took with no retest. Because the way price was, uh, V-shaping out of this with strength, I knew that this was not gonna be a retest model. We have to get in on this now. This is quick price action and it's very aggressive to the downside. Okay, so, guys, trading is feel, man. It's feel. You can't just be a robot saying, I'm only doing this. I'll never do that. I'm only doing that. Yes, you wanna be robotic in your approach, but sometimes you gotta have feel. The greatest traders in the world, they can, they can see the price. They can see the distribution. They can see the orders coming through on the DOM. You gotta have, you gotta have that. That is a skill in itself as well, so. Um, this trade is executed on a full, on just on a break, on a straight break and basically zero drawdown, straight to target. Yeah, just like yesterday when we had no, yeah, we hadn't, it just shot straight down and didn't, didn't give us a chance to get a retest. Exactly. Exactly. So that was Monday's trade. Um, that was Monday's trade setup. That was, um, a quickie, quick little, quick little banger. Um, we will go through the next trade setup, which was this trade setup right here. Okay, we're gonna go through this one. This was a 50-point short towards Asia lows. And this one I really liked. And this actually was a retest inverted for a bad gap. Does anybody have, uh, any questions, first of all? Does anybody wanna get, get onto a Discord audio call real quick and ask any questions? Or do you want me to continue with, uh, the week's trade setup so we can do that after? It's up to you guys, whatever you wanna do. Continue? Okay, no problem. How long will ICT concepts last? As long as the market lasts. As long as the market is there, the ICT concepts will last because what you guys don't understand about ICT concepts is basically a fair value gap is a liquidity void in the market. It's always been like that. It's never really been like, it's not just like a discovered new thing. A fair value gap is a liquidity void, right? It's, it's a, it's an imbalance on one side of the curve, whether it's sell-side or on the buy-side. That is common. That's been around for the, till the algorithm was invented until they created the stock market. That's not going anywhere. Volume imbalances are not going anywhere. It happens every single day. So, to answer your question, it's, until the, until the market goes kaput and it's not here anymore, this will always be the same way that it looks. It's not changing. Why is this guy calling me? Um, so. Sorry, um. Okay, so next trade, uh, setup of the week is this trade setup right here. Okay, so we have a five-minute. Okay, bearish fair value gap. Right here. Um, and the market, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of break this down. I did a YouTube video on this one, but I kinda wanna show you guys why I was looking for shorts here. Um, coming into this session, we're in like a straight sideways consolidation pattern, right? We're just like in, in consolidation. Okay. The market is, and what the key to this puzzle is, I, this is crazy to see this, but watch. The trade setup that I just showed you on that 15-minute breaker, watch this. Isn't that crazy? This is Monday. This is Tuesday. Look at the respect. Look at the respect. If you don't have this still drawn on your chart, right? For Tuesday? You missed something very obvious. And this is what we had drawn on our chart going into Tuesday's live trading session. This 15-minute breaker was still holding. It never was disrespected once to the upside. The fair value gap held. Consequent encroachment of the breaker held. This right here was the clue. This was like the easiest trade of the, of the whole week, in my opinion. We have not broken above the breaker for higher. We're respecting consequent encroachment. We're expecting the fair value gap. We're, we're respecting everything here. So I have this drawn on the chart. Yes, it only gets invalidated when it's disrespected. So if you guys are not keeping on like these higher timeframe breakers and stuff on the chart, um, then that's, that's on you. I mean, you gotta have these higher timeframe breakers drawn, uh, because this is gonna give you guidance. So listen, we come into the session, we see the 15-minute is still, we're still getting respected on the breaker. We drop down into the five-minute timeframe. We can see a massive consolidation pattern here and we're just starting to look weaker and weaker and weaker. Now, this is something that I've been trading for a long time. This is not really an ICT concept. This is just a price action model. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a pattern, basically. I guess it is a little bit of ICT concepts, but I call it the three-drive pattern. Uh, one drive, two drive, third drive failure. So whenever I see this and I just see like weakness coming through, uh, this is just like a three-drive failure pattern. And then we break out and we take relative equal lows, okay? That to me was like, all right, this market has now broken out, right? It's an opening range breakout play. So, once I see this, right? This becomes actually really simple. It's one of my continuation models that I have on the channel. It's really easy. The five-minute fair value gap now gives you the entire clarity for the session. This one five-minute gap here gives you full clarity. It's either you sweep this low V-shape, flip it and go higher. Or you come back up into it, respect consequent encroachment and you go towards Asia. That's how simple this ends up getting. And with the 15-minute breaker holding above, you kinda see where I'm going with this. Shorts look a lot better than longs right now. So, how we end up playing this is this market comes back up into here. Boom. Touches five-minute fair value gap. Okay. And we end up getting, hold on a second. Touches the five-minute fair value gap and then we get another 30-second model here. Let me drop onto the 30. Now, this one had two clues for shorts. Okay. This one had two clues for shorts. I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait for it here. It's coming up very shortly. We're consolidating. Okay. Boom, here it is. Okay. Market comes down. I have this blue line drawn because this is relative equal lows again. So we come down and we make relative equal lows again. Okay, now bringing price back here. Now, we're inside of this five-minute bearish fair value gap. We're respecting consequent encroachment. We end up putting in another Now, we're inside of this five minute bearish for bag at, we're respecting consequent encroachment. We end up putting in another little 30 second breaker model here. Okay. So that's the first clue. I put a YouTube video on this one. So you can see here, there's the, there's the breaker model. Okay. We don't trade the breaker model here because what's the full confirmation is the inverse below it. Here's another 30 second. Okay. 30 second gap right here, breaker. Now this breaker does give us pretty much a very, very clear picture on what's to come next here. This is like pretty damn obvious. It's like, all right, let's put it together. Let's put it together. 15 minute breaker from yesterday's holding. Five minute fair value gap. We have an opening range breakout, relative equal low swept, pull back into a five minute consequent encroachment being respected, drop down to the 30 second. We get in like a miniature breaker model here. We don't trade it. We have it there though. And whenever I see that and there's a, there's a 30 second, uh, gap below. And then we inverse it with speed. Here's your retest model here. This is how we traded this one. That's your retest model. So on this one, because of the straight consolidation and the way price is delivering, I wait for the retest. We get in on the short here. And then we take the trade towards, um, we take the trade towards the Asia low. I believe it's Asia low. Yeah, Asia low. This one took a long time to get there, but eventually full delivery for I believe 51 points. And what I liked about this too, like when we were holding or a lot of people were holding this trade too, you can see that we were building up LRRR inside here. So all this LRRR definitely is going to get tagged. We're building up LRRR. We're building up LRRR here. Like we're just taking LRRR the whole time too. Like you can see like it builds up here. It builds up here and we take it. Right? Builds up here. We take it. Play through. Watch this. It's like laddering up, laddering up, creating LRRR. And then we take it. And this is giving us guidance through the whole trade. Cause you're seeing this get built up and you're seeing like this, basically this, um, I call it like a bearish flag pattern. And then we're just taking LRRR, building up, taking it again. Boom, toward Asia. So yeah, that was, um, what trade was that? That was the eighth. That was Tuesday. So right there on Monday and Tuesday, we're already up 80 something points. Um, Wednesday comes around. It's a break even day. I'm not even going to talk about that break even. Really wasn't anything crazy, pretty boring. Uh, and then we take this base hit on, I believe it was the 10th, the 10th. What day is the 10th here? Uh, we took a base hit on the 10th. There we go. Okay. This, I remember this trade setup too. This was, we're delivering out of a four hour fair value gap. This was just a straight breaker pattern. Really a tight base hit. I'm going to show you guys exactly how this played out on the four hour. Um, whoa, what the heck's going on here? My chart is a complete mess. All right. Let's just go back to the one minute. Anyway, this is delivering out of a four hour gap. Right here. So we tap into a four hour unmitigated and we get a V shaped recovery and a breaker. And we end up getting this trade right here. Very, very cheeky base hit trade. Now guys, why is this a breaker? Right? Remember low, high, lower, low, higher, high breaker. Targeting relative equal highs right here. Boom. Boom. Breaker setup. 26 points. That's it. You guys understand this one? This one's not that complicated. It's literally a higher timeframe PD rate getting swept, V shape recovery, low, high, lower, low, higher, high. Entry here, target, very quick trade. We're not in this trade long because it's, it's still so early in the rotation from the sell off. So we're not in this trade long. We're in this for a base hit and that just, you know, that just gets us for the week. I mean, for the day, and that's a 26 point trade right there. How is it not a unicorn? It is a unicorn. It is. It is a unicorn. You're right. This was a very quick base hit trade because it was early in the rotation. Um, we weren't looking for anything more than these relative equal highs here. As you can see, we, we put in this nice little swing higher. And we end up getting it, but then look at great exit because look, this market wasn't ready yet. See? Sometimes you gotta, you gotta be really, really quick when you're in early rotation of a, of a reversal. You don't want to be in long. This is enough money right here for the day. It's 26 points. All right. And then Friday, we have nothing else, man. Friday, we took no trades. So we had 106 points on the week on three trades. And we were done. Friday, we had no, we, we did have opportunities Friday, but we didn't get filled. Um, there was a really clean inverted for vag gap setup. And we just honestly did not get a fill on it, but, uh, that is, let me see if we can actually look at that trade because that was actually a really clean inverse. Um, let me see, let me see if we can find that. That was a really clean inverse that we were not able to take. I don't know if I remember where it was though. Yeah, it was around here somewhere. Oh, it was right here. Look at this. Look out. We were looking at this. We were stalking it like prey. So we come up and in this situation, we're disrespect, uh, we're tapping into, I believe it's this one hour. I hate the way TradingU does this. I can't see, see it correctly on the higher timeframe. But we're rejecting out of a gap here. I forget. I think it was the one hour gap. Okay. And now we're looking for this market to go inverse right here. Okay. Now watch how screwed we get here. You see how this candle doesn't actually inverse? It doesn't actually inverse. Right? So the only way that we can get involved in this trade is if we break our rules and we take a short here. Um, without an inverse and I don't do that ever. I'm a very disciplined trader because if you break your rules, eventually it's going to come back and bite you in the ass. So we don't take the trade because that's not an inverse. Didn't inverse yet. Watch what happens next. Gone. No way to trade it. Straight towards our targets in that blue line there. So that was a trade model on Friday that I really would have liked to execute. And honestly, if this candle right here would have closed inverse, I would have took the trade. I would have went like this. I would have went like this, targeting these lows and we would have been done for the day. But we don't get it and that's part of trading. Sometimes you gotta be okay with it. So can't be mad about it, but it's good to know that you're reading price action correctly. Guys, we have 147 people in here and 57 likes. Please do me a favor. Tap the likes on the YouTube. If you're enjoying this free education, man, nobody does this stuff. Nobody comes on here, takes their time on a Saturday to do this with y'all. So please, give me some likes. Does it flip on the 30 second? No, I remember looking at the 30 second too, and you didn't get the flip. See? Even this candle doesn't flip. No flip, no flip. Then it flips and all, at this point, the RR is chalked. You're, you're, you're pretty much chalked. This is your confirmation candle and the RR is chalked. You need it to happen here to keep the RR at like a one to two. No, I rarely run promos, bro. I rarely, I rarely run promos. The Discord is jam packed with honestly way too much value for a hundred bucks. If anything, I think I'm going to raise the prices because I really want to kind of mitigate who's coming into this. At this point, we grew so fast. We're almost at 700 members like, and it's just, it's just growing like crazy. So, I mean, you get a course. You get premium education every week. You get live trading. You get giveaways. Like I give away at least a thousand dollars worth of accounts a week. Um, there's just a lot of jam packed value in there. Anything cheaper than that would be honestly, I'm getting robbed. So, yeah, that, uh, that's, that's, the discounts don't happen often. All right. Yeah. And then also guys, we do have a PM session ran by, uh, self, self ran by, um, KW two, KWT and Gaines. So if you guys are looking for PM, you know, trading with a group and community, we've got that as well. I run the AM, they run the PM. So, yeah, you're getting a lot of value there. Hey, no problem Patel. You always gotta ask, man. Uh, info is in my, um, you can look at, click on the link in my YouTube bio, Alex. You'll get right into my premium Discord. Uh, you can look at all the info, all the reviews. We have a 4.99 rated. We're literally the top 100 WAPs in the whole country and whole world. So, um, yeah, that's why we're growing so fast. Hey, if you think a hundred dollars is hella expensive, it's not, it's not going to be for you. For sure. Um, advice on passing evals. Listen, I tell my community all the time, man, I am super aggressive with evaluations. I am risking half of the drawdown on one trade. I'm looking to pass it in one to two trades. I have no fear on an eval. I don't care about it. To me, it's a business expense and it's, it's a whatever. It's, it's part of the business. So I take my A plus models and I get very aggressive with it. Just like on this trade. Let's say I took this trade here, right? I would be in this trade heavy on minis. I'd probably pass that trade, pass the eval in one trade. Like I am not spending a week on an eval. I'm not spending two weeks on eval. I'm in and out on eval. I'm getting back to funded as soon as possible. PJ, I have an eval with an active activation fee baked in. How many micros should I trade? Should I, I risk aggressively? Yeah, you should be aggressive, man. It depends on how you want to approach your evals, man. It depends how far you are into your career. I personally am a very aggressive eval trader because I know I could pass evals with ease. Like it's, it's, it's not hard. You get to a point in, in trading where you know what you're looking for and you're executing it without hesitation and you're very aggressive on, on, you listen, sometimes I don't win, I, I blow an eval or something and that's fine. But most of the time we're passing them and we're back on the funded and scaling the risk back down. Uh, thinking about premium on TradingU, you recommend the 30 second chart PJ? Yeah, I have it. I, I definitely, I definitely, um, you guys are going to miss some key setups without not having the 30 on there. Do we want to get some, do you guys want to show me some trade setups or do you guys want to come on for a little Q and A session, um, on, on the Discord? If you guys are in Discord, go into the main trading chat and tell me that you want to, you want to kind of talk to me or chat. I'll bring you in on the live right now. And then we can, um, we could do some live Q and A. I like doing that because I like to see what you guys, your questions in real time. So, um, if you're in the Discord, if you're not joining it because it's free, we have a free Discord in the paid, the paid one. So join the, uh, the free one. And hop into that, that free chat and I will bring you on to the call right now. Let's see here. Where are you guys? I got a question. I have a question for Q and A. All right. Let's bring KM in here. Let me see if I can get her in her DMs. Hey. All right. I'm going to, I'm going to call you right now, KM. Make sure you answer. Uh, I, I'm calling in your DMs by the way. I don't know if you see it. KM, where are you? Check your DMs on Discord. I'm, I'm in, I'm in an active call with you right now.
Hi. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. I can hear you. How are you?
I'm good. First I want to say thank you because I asked, I won one of your giveaways like a week ago.
Oh, that's awesome.
Okay. So I do have a quick question. Um, it's about, um, when you said the key liquidity points, are you just looking for eat like external liquidity? Um, for example, like session highs, lows, um, previous day, previous week, or do you also look for internal range to be swept to before looking for your setup?
So if you get it internals, like let's say that you get like an internal sweep into a fair value gap, like a four hour, um, let's just say a four hour bearish for value gap, for example, and the market sweeps up into that four hour. And then you get like a reversal pattern out of that four hour, targeting then the opposite draw on liquidity. That's a, that's definitely a trade model. So we're not just stuck and glued to like Asia high, Asia low, London high, London low. A lot of the times you'll notice the best setups actually deliver out of higher timeframe PD rays like that. So yeah, you, you could trade out of, um, an internal fair value gap for sure.
Okay. And what timeframe, like what's the, of course four hour, one hour daily, but do you go as low as like the 15 minute as for?
Oh yeah. I love, I love the 15 minute for that. Yeah. I mean, that first trade, I don't know. Did you see the, the beginning of the session?
No, yeah, I did. I've been on, I, I, this is my first time on your live. It's, it's awesome.
Yeah. So the first trade I think I took this week was out of a 15 minute gap. Yeah, it was. It was the 15 minute, just tiny, it was, well, it was a 15 minute breaker gap. So 15 minute breaker got tapped and then there's a 15 minute for vag gap there. And then that's how I found that entry for a short. So a lot of the time, yeah, the 15 minute is really good for that. Um, you can actually look, if you, are you looking at the stream still?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here.
So you see how this gap gets formed here on the 15 minute? And then this, this basically is just like, I like to call this like a continuation model where it's just tapping into a 15 minute. And it's holding and then you're still going lower from here. So a lot of the times you can literally just make this a model. Like you could just wait for a breakout or retest into a bearish gap and then look for a short or something. Same thing with longs. But, um, I like to trade out of a 15 minute. If you get it out of a one hour, it's even better. Like the higher the timeframe, the PD ray, the stronger it's probably going to be on the reversal.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That was my main question. I truly appreciate it.
All right. No problem. Thank you for coming on.
No problem.
Do we have anybody else, guys? Just hop into the Discord, guys, in the free chat. Let me know you have a question. Um, Jonesy has a question here. Uh, let's get Joan, Jonesy. I'm going to call you real quick. Uh, I'm in your DMs, Jonesy. Answer the call. Yo. Hey, Jonesy, what's up, buddy?
Hey. All right. Um, so a couple of questions. Um, I want to, I want to know, uh, like what your morning routine is like, how you, how do you approach the day going into the charts? Like what time do you get up? What's your prep?
So basically the prep starts the night before. Um, I'll take a look at the market. Uh, you know, around 10:30, 11 before I go to sleep and I pretty much clean up all my charts at that time. Um, I don't mark anything though, because the overnight session is obviously going to put a new structure. So I just basically clean up my charts like that. It just gets clean. And then in the morning, um, typically when I get onto the charts and really start looking at things is right around 8:00 AM. And I'll then mark up everything that happened overnight. So where's my Asia high, Asia low, London high, London low? Did we sleep in that liquidity? Where's the key higher timeframe PD rays? You know, I, I, I get all that drawn onto the charts. Um, and then really, bro, I just chill until nine 30. Like it's, okay. Nothing crazy. Like I don't have like a crazy like routine.
Are you eating like breakfast before that? Like what time do you get up?
Um, I literally get up around like seven 30. Um, I get onto the charts in the morning. I usually just have like some water. And I get the charts marked up really quickly and then I just get breakfast and I start kind of just relaxing and getting ready to trade. Um, I pretty much, it's pretty simple, man. I just keep it simple. I get the, the charts cleaned up the night before. Get up, get a, get some water in me immediately because I'm usually pretty dehydrated and then I'll just, um, I get the charts cleaned up really fast. Like I pretty much have the charts done in like 10 minutes. Like I, I know what I'm doing at this point. It doesn't take me long. And then from there, man, I'm just chilling. Getting, getting ready for the, the nine 30 open. I don't trade pre-market. So I'm not really looking at it. I'm not really extinguishing any of my mental capital before that. And I'm keeping all of it in the tank from nine 30 to 11:30, 12 until we, you know, are done trading the session.
Okay. So you, you'd say like, you have basically just two hours of time in the morning to be prepared to like get on the charts.
Yeah. I mean, I don't recommend waking up and just like rolling out of bed and getting on the charts. I like to actually get some movement going. Like I usually go out and get. Yeah, I mean, I don't recommend waking up and just like rolling out of bed and getting on the charts. I like to actually get some movement going. Like I usually go out and get food and you know, get out into some fresh air for a little bit before I just hop onto the charts. I always make a joke like we have people that like have crust in their eyes still and they're getting like onto the charts. I don't recommend that. Like get your body moving a little bit, get some air, get some sun, because when you're on the charts, you have to be 100% locked in on the charts. Like you're not, like you have to be really, really focused on what we're doing. Otherwise, you're gonna miss things. So um again, this, it's not just the morning routine, though. It's the everyday routine. I am in the gym six, six days a week. Like I'm watching while I'm eating six days a week. I'm I'm being really disciplined in all this other stuff outside of my trading life, because if you're not disciplined there, you're not gonna be disciplined on the charts either. So.
Yeah, I'm asking because I I struggle with the medical reasons for sleep. So I have a hard time getting up in the morning for AM session. Uh so.
Have you thought about, have you thought about trading a different session?
That's actually what I was just about to ask. It's about how do you like, would you take two hours for PM? Like let's say you were.
You could, yeah.
First, for some, some reason you were up late, you know, to be in with the your wife or girlfriend or whatever. Um and then you were like, okay, I'll trade PM tomorrow. Or you thought AM was gonna be chalked. AM had been chalked. You're like, I'm gonna trade PM. Would you uh would you like take two hours basically beforehand before trading PM session?
What do you mean take two hours like?
Like if you, maybe you got up at like, I don't know if you start trading at one or 1:30, like when you start actually consider taking a trade on PM, but um.
So PM, PM kills zone basically is like 1:30 to 3:30. Um so for someone that like you, that maybe doesn't want to trade AM, you should, you should just trade PM then. So I would probably start looking at the charts. Um around noon, basically to get an idea of what happened in that AM session. Do we sweep major liquidity? Do we have any liquidity left? You know what I mean? That's the reason why I like the AM session because the AM session usually takes all liquidity. And then by the time, by the time PM comes, sometimes it's 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 a slower session like that. It's sometimes it's really good, but most of the time it's a slower session. So yeah, um but listen, I know people that trade PM by themselves and they're really, really good at it. So it it all comes down to your personality and your like your routine.
Yeah, I'm I'm fighting to try and trade the AM, but if if I know that I've had bad sleep, I just go, I'll trade the PM session.
Oh, I would not. I would not trade if you had bad sleep. Yeah, I would definitely recommend taking the time to get your your energy levels up first, your mind clear and focus in on that PM session.
Yeah. Um how do you uh approach uh red folders? Do you trade through them ever?
Never trade through them. No.
Okay, and that's all red folders?
Every single red folder. Sometimes there's, there's sometimes there's a red folder that I know that's a low impact red folder. Um particularly particularly PPI on a Monday is usually really just worthless. Um but other than that, the rest of them I do not trade through.
Um also.
I'm trying to go back to the calendar here because there's, there's a day that it was really worth. But uh I think it was ICM. Yeah, it was ICM PMI. On the second, I believe we took a trade right through it. I forget if that was the day though, but I would advise basically avoiding all red folders if you could. Um don't trade through them. Don't hold through them. Don't get into a position before them. The only thing I would say if you're in a big position or you're in like a position and you're up 100 points or 50 points, just move stops to break even on it. If you really want to be risky like that. Um so you're, so you're protected.
What is your time for it? Because it's really annoying. Sometimes I've had the past couple of weeks where like it'd be a 10 AM news folder and uh I'd be like, man, this is like the perfect setup. And then just being like, I can trade through it. And then watching it just completely ignore the folder. And so what is, what is the timeframe? Um before the red folders where you won't take a trade? Like how close to a red folder will you take a trade?
Guys, this guy had brought, has brought some really good questions. So I hope you guys are taking notes. So I'm sure a lot of you have these questions as well. So your question was when do I what exactly? Ignore.
How close to a red folder? Let's say it's 10 AM. How close to the 10 AM before will you take it? Because after it's basically like maybe five minutes, but how, how close? Because you like to be in for maybe eight minutes. How close will you get to that red folder?
I won't take a trade if the red folder is sitting at 10 AM though. I will unless it like very rare dude. I I don't think I've ever, I don't think you're gonna see me do it really often. I usually wait for that 10 AM folder to happen. Um typically, the real move is not gonna happen until after the 10 AM folder anyway. So anything you're getting into before that is probably not even worth it. Probably like RR is not that good or there's manipulation or it's consolidating. I'm always usually waiting for that 10 AM.
Okay, so let's say 10:30 or maybe 11, something like that.
Right after 10 AM news. I mean, it's a go. Like we, we'll, we'll just wait. We'll see.
I'm saying the red folder is at 10:30 or 11.
Uh there's usually not a red folder at 10:30 and 11 though. Usually 10, it's usually 10.
Okay. Yeah, like you're right. I I'm just trying to get an idea of um you know, how close uh you would get to it. Okay. Um the last thing I just wanted you to explain the uh the breaker block of the second video or or the last video that you posted. It was the second trade. I think you talked about today. Last video you posted yesterday.
The breaker block, the one that was a a four hour reversal one, no, that was kind of just a base set.
I think it's off the 15 minute uh fair value gap. It's like the 30 second timeframe breaker.
Uh which, which one? Because I took two of them off the 15 minute this week. Oh, 15. Well, was it the first one?
This is the second trade.
Oh, the, the, the 30 second, the 30 second breaker block that was, uh that was formed inside of the uh that was, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, uh because I think like, is that technically not a mitigation block? Because it's a WIC high, the the second high doesn't actually close higher.
So I believe there was, no, maybe there wasn't. I thought there was a difference between MNQ and NQ continuous contract on that. That's why I had it marked. Um so here's the thing, the the pattern, whenever I see like this pattern delivering out of like a a fair value gap like this, technically, you could say it's a mitigation. But I'm really just using this as a clue. I'm not trading it really. If you like, I'm not actually in the breaker. You can't really even get involved in it. I'm just, I, when I see a pattern like this, here's why. When you see a pattern like this, normally that pattern starts to deliver the opposite direction. What happened here on a 30 second timeframe was it put a high, low, higher high. This did WIC and clean this up now. So this is all cleaned up. This is all this little junk here. And this usually is the sign of of a reversal pattern. So I'm not actually trading this breaker because you can't because it it moves too quickly. This is just a sign for me that, alright, this is probably ready to reverse from here now out of this five. Like that's the last sweep you're gonna get before the actual directional move happens. So I have it marked here for guidance, but then obviously the full confirmation is the flip below here on the inversion.
Okay, oh yeah, yeah. I like, I I I got you. It's basically like, yeah, it's it's a rough, not rough, but like it's it's not an exact indicator, but you're using it for like a feel type of thing.
Yeah, exactly. It's a feel type of a thing. When you see like the market put in a high, low, higher high, and then a swift move below that for a change in the state of delivery, that's, that's a really big clue of what's going on, especially when it's delivering out of a five minute PD rate like that and we're respecting a 15 minute gap up here. I mean, a 15 minute breaker up here. Like these are just little clues that give you like reassurance. Another, basically another check on your checklist.
Um yeah, dude, that's all I got. I appreciate you having me on, man.
Alright, Jonesy, thank you, man. Uh does anybody else want to hop in chat? Anybody, anybody, anybody? I can't see who's in here. Uh mods, do we have gains? Do we have anybody? Do we have anybody? Do we have anybody? Do we have anybody? PJ Ashton also has a question. Okay, where's Ashton? Ashton, I'm gonna DM you right now. I'm calling you right now, Ashton. In your DMs, in check your DMs right now. Uh I have Ashton coming on gains. Tell him to check his uh check your DMs, bro. Yo, what's up, bro?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you. Can you hear me? Change your uh your voice settings. Yo, yo. Yo, 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 yo.
Uh.
Can you hear me?
I could hear you, but I can't.
You can't what? If you can't hear me? What?
Alright, it's wait, it's like so delayed, but I don't know. Okay, I'll just ask my question. Um.
It's probably your, your YouTube thing coming through. You gotta mute it. They mute the YouTube.
Okay, I muted it. Alright, that's better.
Good job, brother.
Um I just wanted to go over setup from yesterday. I don't know if you saw it in the live or not. Um obviously, we didn't get that 30 second trade, but um there was a five minute like inverse on the way up. I'm not sure if you like saw that or were iffy on it up to the London highs in the four hour gap.
Uh yeah, because I was looking for shorts that day into Asia lows still. So I wasn't even, I wasn't looking at the long, but which one were you talking about?
If you look on the five minute right there.
Yep. One second. Where the heck did it go? Okay, yeah, the five minute inverse right here.
Yeah, it was like an inverse of the five minute BPR, but there was another. It made another gap on the way up and it tapped back into that. Up to the London high.
Yeah, I remember. It was, it was that big ass five minute breaker everyone was talking about. Yep.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I didn't even realize it was a breaker, but yeah, I was just wondering.
Remember this right here? Remember that we? Okay, so what was your question?
Well, I was just wondering like what made you iffy on that, but I guess, yeah, because you were looking for shorts, but.
Hmm. Yeah, I was worried about the Asia lows sitting so close um being right down there. So I just, I just didn't execute a a long trade there. And I remember, I think this was getting a little bit late into the session at this point. Um and yeah, I mean, we, we, I think, I think I might have just ended the stream though. I think I just ended the stream and this happens or something. Yeah, I forget. I'm pretty sure it was like right around this time. But yeah, I mean, this right here, if you, if you.
Not that part.
What part?
Like the, I'm talking about the tap in from before where it went up to London high. See that five minute, not the BPR. I'm talking about just that five minute gap on the way up. To the left.
This one?
You, yeah, right there, right there, yeah.
Yeah. So what about this? Is this the inverse here you're talking about?
Yeah, it's the inverse and then it's not like not where the part where you end.
This right here?
Where you ended stream. I'm just, yeah.
Yeah. So are you asking me why I didn't take it?
Yeah, well, I was just, I thought you didn't see it yesterday, but I was wondering if you were if you on that because I was trying to ask that yesterday, but.
No, no, I um, like I said, I was still looking for, I was looking for Asia lows to get swept here because I really didn't think that we took any liquidity to the downside. If you look at it. I mean, what do we even take? It it just, this area just reversed from an area of, I don't even know, really. I mean, we took London low overnight. We came back down into here, really didn't sweep any liquidity. Like if this would have swept the Asia low here and then did this, I think we would have been all over it. But it just reversed from like a random spot. And that's the reason why I got thrown off with the trade. So when I don't have a liquidity sweep of a key area, I don't really, I'm not even really looking at it. This just becomes lower probability. It ends up working out here. But it's not the cleanest. It's a little sketchy.
And then.
No, yes, it.
A little later after we.
Yes, didn't sweep it either. Whoever said that, yes, did not sweep the AM low either. It just, they reversed from weird points. Yep, so what's next?
Yeah. And then after it swept London high and then it tapped into the four hour, like it kept kind of climbing up a little bit. And it went into, it went into the last like 15 minute on the way down to the left. So I thought like that was a really good trade. I tried calling that out, the two minute breaker. You said you saw it, but there was not really like a like, I guess, yeah, it's not really a strong draw on liquidity, but.
Right here?
Ended up working out. Yeah, like.
I'm just trying to.
Yeah, it came back down to the break.
Yeah, so it came back down into the breaker.
Two minute breaker though.
Well, it's a five minute breaker. Why would you be marking it on the two? Do you think about?
No, no, at the top, not that one.
Oh, two, you took a two minute short? Yeah, no, this is just, this, this, that just doesn't make any sense though. Like why, I remember, I I remember, I remember you guys talking about this, but for me, I don't have a clean draw on liquidity really here. I wouldn't be trading this. So I'm at this point, this, this just becomes lower probability trading. Like, yeah, there's a pattern here for a two minute. But like, you're, you're kind of just counter trend trading into where an external low? You know what I mean? Like that, that's where things become super sketchy.
Yeah, I just thought it was strong because we tapped into the four hour, tapped into the last 15 minute on the way down. And we swept London high. So like, and it was a two minute unicorn. So I thought it was pretty strong, but I guess, I mean, it did play out.
You, you, you can, I mean, if you see something, man, you gotta execute it on what makes sense to you. Um I don't trade like just any old like pattern at a swing point. I actually need like key areas to draw into. I always say this, like the draw liquidity is may, is very, very important for me. If I took this trade here, I would feel a little bit sketched out because I think that we're, we just took like a major swing high. And I don't know, man. I just don't have the conviction I would if I had like, let's say this was like, alright, let's say this was like Asia low. I probably would take this trade, but this is just a random like, we're just, we're just taking a trade back into a breaker. Like it's, 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 it's a, it's a, it's a dicey setup and more often than not, it's gonna get you in trouble.
Alright, yeah, I just wanted your thoughts on one of those trades. I didn't, I would have taken that, but I already took the five minute on the way up, so I got locked out for the day, but.
Yeah, there's a, there's always gonna be patterns that you end up seeing like in the market and it's, you have to really make a judgment call on if this pattern is worth me taking a trade on. Um I feel like this is is kind of lucky that this just reverses from here and then comes back down and goes back up. This was seek and destroy price action. I remember calling it out. Like it was just all over the place. Like you went low, you went high, you went low, you were high, you went back into a breaker. Like I don't really like the way price is playing out here. Yeah, there are some random patterns that work out, but more often than not, these are gonna get you in trouble. Especially when there's no key draw liquidity. So um I can understand why you would see them. You're not wrong in any way. Like this is actually like this actually does form a breaker setup up here, but it's not the cleanest breaker setup by any means. And I don't even think there's a retest of the breaker. Was there? I don't think there was. So you gotta just build in a little bit more confluence into the idea. And then you'll start to understand why I'm talking about draws on liquidity being key. Alright?
But yeah, the only thing that was missing there was the draw on liquidity, I guess, because.
Exactly. I mean, if if you had a clean draw on liquidity with this reversal here, um I I think it would be like a very clean setup, but in this scenario, it's a counter trend trade of the over, overall higher timeframe bias, which is bullish. So you have to know this is more of a scalp trade. And it's not, you're not really, you don't really have a clean draw on liquidity. Now, if we end up flipping like this gap here, it's pretty obvious that we're going Asia low. So it all, it all, it all depends on what the draw on liquidity is in that situation. But from here at this point, this, this, I think this long ends up going and working from here, right? Towards the Asia high? Because that ends up looking pretty good, but. This marker kind of slowed down at the end of the day, though. Alright, man. I appreciate the questions. I'm gonna bring somebody else in.
Alright, yeah, appreciate it.
See you, bro. Okay. Okay. So yeah, I mean, like his question is like, why, why am I not taking this trade? Guys, the thing is, I'm not taking every single, I'm not taking every single pattern off of a, just a random swing point. That's just not how I trade. I have to have, I really have to build in a lot of like reason behind my trading. Otherwise, I if you do this a long enough, you're going to realize that these patterns only work really well when there's true conviction and draws on liquidity. Like the yes, this ends up working and some people might have taken it to this external low here. I'm not a fan of these trades. Especially when my higher timeframe bias is long, is bullish. This is a counter trend trade, so it gets really risky. I use the ICT kill zone indicators. Pope God, you can go onto my Discord and go to the indicators tab and you can find it in there. I use EST, UTC minus four and B minus ADJ at the bottom down here. So the Asia low is down here, the old Asia low. On NQ. This was, I believe, prior. No, this was, yeah, that, this was Thursday trade? Yeah, this was, yeah, this was Thursday Asia low down here. Hey Rafael, what's your question, brother? How long have we been live? An hour and 10? Okay, cool. Would you have taken the trade after that one out of the big breaker back to the high? At this point, I, I think I already called it because the market was very wonky and wobbly. And I was in defensive mode here. Would I have, would I have taken it? The issue I have, I had with it, and I remember talking about it, is you're gonna have to run a wide ass stop on this trade. You're gonna be running like a 40 something point stop on that trade. Unless you're getting like this, unless you got like this entry here. So like, here's the thing about breakers, the way that you're supposed to draw, you're supposed to take it is on the tapping of the breaker. Okay, so you're gonna have to run a 44 point stop here unless you got it here and you're running a 25 point stop and it makes, it makes a little bit more sense. But no, I think this actually ends up being a really good trade because I think you can even just look at the 30 second inverse and take that too. Which gives you just extra confluence. Like you could have taken the inverse right there. Right here and then ran a stop below that and that would actually have been a really juicy RR up into like this swing higher. Just really like kind of wonky price action. And the reason that I also didn't want to take a trade like this, we're getting so late into the AM session. I usually like to be done by like 11:30. On a Friday, no news, getting into lunch, I don't want to be involved in it. Price action gets really, really wonky. Do you only take your entry during macro time? No, I don't take it only during macro time. I take it, I take it in the kill zone. You trade Asia and London? No, no, I don't, I don't, I don't trade Asian London in London. I'm on your premium Discord since two days and it still doesn't work. I wasn't able to see any of your live trading sessions on premium yet so far. Uh, you need to really reach out to WAP support, man. They're, they'll be able to fix that for you in like a couple of minutes. You likely have your WAP is associated with a different Discord account and you don't even know it. So reach out to WAP support, they'll fix it. A lot of people have had that issue before. You need to be on the right Discord that's associated with the WAP membership. Otherwise, that's the reason you don't see anything. You ever bottom tick? No, I don't bottom tick. Right. Bottom ticking is basically gambling. I know there's a couple of guys out there that, that advertise the bottom tick strategy and I know exactly who it is. I'm not going to say his name. But um, just know that that person that's doing that is taking massive amounts of entries to try to bottom tick and then showing you the one that works. Doesn't work for a long time, man. It's not a good strategy. You'll get, you'll get beat up pretty fast trying to bottom tick. On the edge of my seat for the next episode of Trade Island. That's funny. Trade, Trade Island episode two. I have a question, brother. So I know your rule of thumb is one micro per $500 of drawdown. How much are you risking dollar wise per trade? I struggle with this aspect. So if you give me some advice, I'd appreciate it. One, how much are you risking dollar wise per trade? It's always, it's always different, man. It's always different. It depends on the size of the stop loss. Can I hop in now? Yeah, I got you. Hold on. I'll send you a message right now. Ask Sprangle, Ask Sprangle. I'm calling you up, Ask Sprangle. Join the call on Discord, Ask Sprangle. Ask Sprangle, I'm calling you up. Check your DM on Discord. I'm in the call right now. Oh, man. What's your mass, mass, max risk on a trade on a 50K account creating a buffer? It's a, it, again, it depends on the, it depends on the, the stop loss size. Max risk is probably going to be like $300. 250, 300 in that range.
Hello?
Hey, what's up, buddy?
Hey, man, you alright?
I'm good, man. What's going on?
Not, not too much. Um, just a quick, a quick one, if you don't mind. Um, you know, the AM Friday setup that you were talking about?
Which one?
The one on 32nd where you were just waiting.
The inverse?
Wait for the inverse, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, you see the one minute kind of BPR just above?
Give me a second. I'm gonna get back to that, that exact moment.
Yeah, no worries, man. Thank you.
Okay, so we're looking at the one minute inverse here and you're talking about a one minute BPR?
I took, I took a trade just off of that. You see the one minute BPR at the very top?
I see.
You have that V shape out of the 15 minutes. Is that valid or is it always kind of essential to wait for the one minute inverse?
Are you asking me based on my strategy? Are you, like, what is your question?
Kind of just, you know, from your experience as a, as, you know, more of a rule of thumb, really.
So yeah, I, right, right where you're, what you're doing here on this BPR, on this retest of this BPR is really you're just trading a sell side imbalance, buy side inefficiency, like retest. Basically, uh, you're retesting and trading off the BPR. I get it, but you're also then front running the bullish gap that it put in there. So you have to know that it's a higher risk setup. It's not that it's wrong, but it is higher risk. Because at any moment, if this doesn't flip inverse and then just rips up from here. That's how, that happens a lot too. Like that's just you have to kind of back test that for yourself and see if it's valid, if that works for your strategy. But more often than not, um, the full confirmation is going to be to break.
Cool. Okay, man. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. That's, um, yeah, that was really it, to be honest. It was just a case of in, you know, in your opinion, if the BPR is strong enough, then you know, it's valid. If not, then
The B, the BPR is really good to trade off of, but I, I would not want to trade it while it's inside of a, a bullish gap if you're looking for a short.
Definitely.
So like, if this BPR was, let's say that you broke below here, right? You broke below the inverse and there's nothing else on this leg. And then it creates like a BPR gap here and it comes back in, I would take that all day long. That's a really strong trade. But it being inside of this one minute buy side efficiency, sell side imbalance, it gets a little dicey. So it is a higher risk, to higher, higher degree of risk on that.
Yeah, no worries, man. Yeah, I get you. Um, yeah, definitely. Cause uh, yeah, yeah, no, that made sense. Thank you.
Alright, man, that's it?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I think that's all.
Alright, buddy. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Cheers.
Uh, what is a BPR? A BPR is a balanced price range. It's when two fair value gaps overlap with each other and they create a balanced price range, which is a very strong area of support and or resistance. Uh, his question was valid because he wonders if I, if you should take a BPR trade like this inside of a bearish, a bullish gap. I personally wouldn't because it is higher risk, um, but in this scenario, it does end up working out. Biggest RR win? I have no idea, man. And it's honestly irrelevant to your growth. You should be asking legitimate questions, not worrying about what my biggest RR win is. I just don't even understand that mindset. Why would that make you a better trader? Me telling you my biggest RR win? How often do I look at ES as a parallel to NQ? The entire session? The entire session. A true coach. No, seriously, I mean, it's, it's a valid ask question. Like why? Why would my RR, my best RR trade improve your trading? Like why, why is that even on your mind? What you should be thinking about here today is what's a good question I can ask a nine year professional that I don't know the answer to? Pretty simple. Would it be better to trade NQ? Or ES for the inverted? They both, they both trade the same. Depends on which one you like better. I was just asking a question. Yeah, I know you're just asking a question, but there's really no value behind me answering the question. You know what I mean? Even if you got payouts before. I'm here to provide value. I don't think I don't think me answering what my best RR trade is really value. I think it's just a waste of time. How do I get better at leaving up for the day? Lock yourself out, dude. If you have an issue with that, then you seriously are, need to start reevaluating your life. If you can't take a green day. And let's put, let's put this in perspective, guys. Most people work eight hours a day for $20 per hour. And some of you guys make that money in seconds and you still want to trade. You still don't want to take the profit. Put that into perspective for a second. You're making somebody's daily means in a few seconds and you still want to trade. Just ask yourself that question. Why on earth does that make any sense? What you should be looking at this market and how you should be viewing it is that I can get into this market, make a thousand dollars in a few minutes and I'm done. Why do you need more money? Especially if you're copy trading, dude. If you're copy trading on 10 accounts and you're making $200 per account, like it's a lot of money, man. I don't trade Forex, whoever asked me that question. No, I started in 2016 with Forex. I'll never trade Forex again. What was my daily bias this week? Uh, I don't, I don't come in with a daily bias, David, to any, any, any trading day. Uh, the overall higher timeframe gives me a picture of what the market's doing. It's all about where the draw on liquidity is. And I took three trades this week, not two. But I never come into a day saying I'm married to a bias. That's very dangerous. Very, very dangerous. You need to get married to your draws on liquidity and figure out where they are. As soon as you realize what I'm saying to you, things might start to click. But don't get stuck on a daily bias, especially a weekly dare, daily bias. Oof, no. Don't do that. You have to become a reactionary trader, man. Not a predict, don't try to predict the market, react to what it's doing and take trade setups like that. FX is much more fundamental. FX is just highly manipulated. Uh, countries manipulate policy to manipulate their currency to look stronger and weaker. Uh, I, I don't recommend trading currencies anymore. There's too many swap fees. There's too many fees. There's too many scam brokers. If you're gonna trade Forex, you better make sure it's a regulated broker. It's just your futures is so much better. This is not even close. I feel that I'm finally getting better at understanding that and using micros to take the money and run to break even. Love your videos, man. I appreciate it, man. Can you break down how to determine if it's a continuation of or a reversal to keep from getting chopped? Uh, you gotta, you gotta know what the draw liquidity is in order for that to make sense. If the draw liquidity is lower and you know it's lower, then you can obviously just look for a continuation model of, you know, the market pulling back into a five minute gap like I did it on Monday or something. I think there is a trade setup here. That was just a very easy continuation model. You see how this market just breaks out of the low? And then we just take a trade straight into the age low because that's the draw, right? I'm confident in my draw liquidity. I'm confident, confident in it being the draw liquidity. This market then pulls back into a five minute gap. Okay, and then it just falls from there. The draw liquidity, liquidity in this situation is the guidance. That's all it is. Okay, so we get a five minute retest and then we get the 30 second inverse. Right here. Okay, so the market had breaking out, it broke out. Right? It's, it's holding the five minute gap. It's holding a 15 minute bearish gap above. Right? And the draw is right here. So you gotta get your draw right. If this, if there is no open draw liquidity here, I'm probably fading this trade and not taking it. But because we have an open draw down here and then all's I'm waiting for is this to go inverse. Boom, we're in on the retest. Right? And then we're, we're selling it here. Stop loss here, TP here. And that's it. That's the draw. This is the draw. You have to have conviction in your draw, guys. If you don't have any conviction in your draws on liquidity, like what are you doing? Why are you trading? And that goes to my point earlier about why I wouldn't be taking that counter trend trade short that someone asked me on the stream because I don't have a draw. What's the draw? Figure out the draw, the money will come. So many different questions. I don't know which ones to ask. Um, we're kind of losing viewers, so I'm assuming people are getting bored. Probably gonna call it here in a few minutes. I'll ask, I'll answer a couple more questions. David, you're, you say draws and liquidity, but wouldn't assume assessing the daily bias with the draw here just give you more confirmation of where the market is going? You could, you could, man, but at the end of the day, I'm not trading a daily timeframe. I'm trading a, I'm mostly trading a one minute, 30 second timeframe. I'm not worried about really what the daily draw liquidity is going to end up being. I'm not holding long, trades long. My average trade time is seven, eight minutes. I think it's great to have guidance from the daily, the four hour, the one hour. But at the end of the day, if the draw liquidity is, is on the 15 minutes, 100 points below me and it looks very obvious. I'm gonna take that trade to that draw. So it's great to have the higher timeframe guidance, but I'm not trading the daily timeframe. I'm not trading the four hour timeframe either, really. I'm trading a lower timeframe here. This is, this is very, very low. This is a 30 second timeframe. You definitely need higher timeframe guidance, but I'm telling you right now, you're going to go broke trying to get married to what the higher timeframe is telling you when you're not looking at what the lower timeframes are also telling you as well. What would confirm a clear DOL? Asia low being open and the market rejecting a 15 minute breaker block and the market breaking out towards it, believing it for later? You, you need to know where these draws on liquidity are. That's a clear draw. And if you guys wanna learn how to trade like this, this is what I teach in my Discord. It's a hundred dollars a month and there's a course, how to set your charts up, how to set your draws on liquidity. Premium education, weekly, live trading, four to five times a week with me. We have a PM session ran by one of my head traders. So if you guys are confused on this stuff and you really wanna take your trading to the next level, probably the best hundred dollars you're ever gonna, you know, get for, for the level of education you're gonna get. That's why we're the, literally, we just broke into the top 100 trading discords in the world. I would not take a four hour tap turtle soup. No, super risky. No, I don't like doing that. That's, that's like the guy asking me earlier, do you bottom tick, top tick? You're never gonna be able to predict that correctly. I need confirmation in my trading. Are lunchtime highs and lows valid? No, I don't use them. I don't use them. They're really not valid to me. I don't like lunch, I don't like lunchtime highs and lows. I'm a scalper. Nice. Do you only trade towards DOL or also after DOL is taken? If the DOL is already taken, man, then we don't have a clear draw on liquidity. That means we don't have a trade. There is just one single A plus trade opportunity each day, sometimes two, very rare. Isn't change in the state delivery meant to be consecutive candles? I don't know what that even means. The change in the state delivery is, is the reversal of the algorithm distributing in the opposite direction. And it has to break a key swing high or low point to be a change in the state of delivery. It has nothing to do with consecutive. Could be one candle. Why is London only two to five? How can a session only be three hours? That's the kill zone of the session, just like you have a kill zone for AM, you have a kill zone for PM. That's when liquidity is the highest and the most orders are fluxed through the market between two and five AM. What advice do you have on navigating through trailing drawdown like on Apex, for example? Navigating trailing drawdown, bro, is really not that difficult. You need to start with micros and you need to scale your way up. I have a whole, a whole video on that in the premium section on how to, how to scale up funded accounts with trailing drawdown. Always, always, always start with micros if you're building liquidity, if you're building buffer. Always start with micros. I saw the TikTok, how are you liking the chosen one model so far? Uh, honestly, that it's, it's, it's really, um, something that's starting to grow on me. I'm starting to look at it a little bit more and more. And, uh, this week was a great example of it working in real time. So I'll keep looking at it and keep seeing, you know, how well it performs. Nick, thank you, Nick. If London is two to five, when Asia, when is Asia then? I've gotten so many different answers. Uh, Asia is eight to 12. Do you recommend copy trading or rotating multiple accounts? And would you scalp all day or wait for A plus setups? I think you already know the answer to these questions, bro. If you're just, I mean, if you're, if you know me, you know that I do not sit at the charts all day long. I'm looking for one to two trades max a day. Max. And I, I copy trade each firm individually. So like, one week I'll be on uh, one week I'll be on like my foot of futures, one week I'll be on TPT, one week, you know, just rotate the firms. I don't trade all them at once because that's just super risky. I use the built in trade copier for TradeVate. It's my favorite one, honestly. Really, 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 really solid. Uh, really just never had issues with it. Um, any of these like third party copiers that you guys are like probably seeing like Replicanto and Trader Sinker, like these are third party platforms and they have issues. So me being able to just use the TradeVate copier on TradeVate, executing on TradeVate with no third party input lag. Telling you right now, that's, that's the way to do it. You could, you could try the copiers and honestly, I think they have improved a lot because there was issues in the beginning uh, with Replicanto and with Trader Sinker. Um, but I personally just stick to TradeVate because I know how to use it. Bro, I'm gonna be honest, after this live, I'm joining your premium. Not to dispal, but I'm in this Discord. I've gotten more advice from this live alone than anything in this Discord. You're gonna get overwhelmed with education in this Discord, bro. We're, we're creating, you know, people that wanna learn how to, how to fish for a lifetime. You know? Yeah. Give a man a fish and you feed him for a day. Teach a man to fish, you feed him for a lifetime. That was the cool, I was trying to come up with my head. Akram, you've asked the question 67 times now and I'm just gonna ignore you because that's just extremely rude. So, uh, we're gonna go ahead and just put you in timeout. I have Replicanto for over a year now, no issues ever, luckily. That's awesome. I think they, I think Replicanto is definitely the better way to go. Uh, versus like Trader Sinker, which is brand new. Rafael, I appreciate it, man. Thank you so much. Hopefully we see you in the premium Discord, man. Guys, listen. I'm not even like trying to oversell this or anything. Um, I've been trading for almost 10 years. I was under the radar up until December. I traded all by myself with one other trader, works on Wall Street. Um, we traded in the trenches for all those years. I released my content to the public in December of 2024. Um, we're basically just hit like the seventh, eighth month mark of my content being out there. Um, there's a reason that's growing so fast, uh, is because I love what I do, man. I love teaching you guys how to trade. I love teaching you guys how to become better, more disciplined traders from a psychology point. Um, and I'm not just saying this, I think we are the best futures Discord in the world as far as professionalism goes. This is not like a little kid's entertainment area. We do have a lot of fun. We do make money. We do practice very strong discipline. But at the end of the day, like, this is a business to me. Like, my, I'm, I, I've been trading my whole, like, I've been trading for 10 years now, like the, me inviting you into this Discord is an opportunity to watch a pro trade. So I have a certain level of like respect towards you guys, which I need back in return. But I think the reason why we've grown so fast is that it's a professional trading floor. Like, it's not like some of the stuff out there. I won't ma- name any names, but if you're looking for a more mature approach to the markets, then you're at the right place. Wow, I don't like that. I don't like all this stuff that they put in this Starbucks coffee. I am not currently trading TopZap right now. No, Duncan, I'm not. I have in the past. I've gotten a lot of payouts from TopZap, but um, I'll be honest with you, man. I, I really think Michael's, I'm not gonna say anything. I'm just, I'm not trading TopZap. What was your strategy before you changed to ICT? I didn't really have one, bro. Honestly, I was trading, I was, I was one of those in between lost traders. Support resistance, EMAs. You know, all this other crap in between, uh, Fibonacci retracements and all this other crap like, um, it's just, it's just not for me. Uh, it just wasn't for me. So that was what I was trading before I traded ICT. I actually wanna show you guys something that's really cool. Maybe we'll shut it down from here, but because Fibonacci retracement got me thinking about something. Um, Fibonacci retracements, right? I don't use them anymore. Uh, I, I really think they're just really hard to predict correctly, but what I use the tool for now is what we call standard deviation tool. And I wanna show you something really crazy. The standard deviation tool is a tool that is gonna give you extreme guidance in your trade setups. And it's used from a manipulation swing high to manipulation swing low. And as you can see in this example here, if we're looking at the 15 minutes swing low to swing high, right here from this swing low to the swing high, you draw the, you draw the, um, the tool like this, and then it projects out on the screen standard deviations for where the algorithm likes to draw to and or bounce. Okay? Now, my favorite ones are the minus one, the minus two, the minus two and a half and the minus three. This minus four standard deviation is an extended swing target. I don't ever use it as a full draw liquidity, but um, I wanted to show you how cool this is because it, it's really like everyone's like, oh, ICT is random and these standard deviation tools don't make any sense. Well, there's, I have a million and one examples on how they do make sense. But as you can see here, this trade right here off this, off this entry, you see how that minus one lines up perfectly with the London low? That is the area that I wanna be taking profit out. And I wanna be scaling out of my position and or going straight to break even here. So that's why in this trade, we take this like this and we're out of this trade immediately at that low. Just like that. Because the minus one standard deviation lines up with the London low, which is a main swing liquidity point, which also could be a point where the market wants to bounce from and we don't wanna be in the trade anymore because anything I'm doing here in this market right now on a counter, on a, on a sell side of the curve is a counter trend trade. So I'm trying to get in and get out like a surgeon. And in this trade setup here, we take a 30 second inverse, straight to the minus one standard deviation, as you guys can see here. Okay, and then the minus one standard deviation is our full TP, but look how it bounces from there. See, like anything you're doing here, over, you're overstaying your visit. You wanna be out at minus one in this situation. Now, the minus two and the minus two and a half and minus three standard deviation are fantastic for trending markets and I can use them as extended targets as well. But typically, the minus one is gonna be where you really wanna start looking to either go break even, scale out of position or hit a full TP. Alright? Alright, guys. Um, I appreciate you guys so much for showing up. Uh, this is our second YouTube free live session, tons of value, an hour and 40 minutes. If you missed it, it'll be posted on YouTube. You guys can go back and, and really work through it, but hopefully I see you guys in the Discord, whether it's the free, uh, the free Discord or the premium Discord. If you wanna engage with the community more, that's the place to do it. Hop into that Discord. And uh, yeah, we'll see you guys, um, we'll see you guys hopefully this week on the live trading floor, guys. Have a great one, man. Stay blessed, alright?